Well, I guess we are at time as well.
Recording in progress.
So we will have a call to order and start into the agenda, first of which is approval of the agenda. Any addition of late items?
Not for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Susanna, Eve, anything additional? Any questions?
No.
No.
Okay, so a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye, aye. Okay, second thing is adoption of the minutes of the April 1st committee of the whole meeting, which are attached to the package. Any adds, changes, deletes?
No.
Okay, motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Oops, don't close the package again, okay? So third, next on the agenda is a number of unfinished business, which I suspect that's all we will have now is unfinished business, given that this is our last cycle. So the first item will be the UBIT CBRD conversion process status update from our interim administrator, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what I've tried to do is put a status update report together. All of these items are in one report. I haven't included all of the conversion items or strategic projects because nothing much has changed on a lot of them in the, you know, two-week period since the last report. But there's a couple of things that I'm suggesting we, we need to have a bit of a chat about. I'll deal, and my report is attached to the agenda. I won't go through it in detail, but firstly, dealing with the two conversion items. I'll deal with the proposed handover of the keys event, which had been talked about, which has been talked about for June 30th, which is the final day prior to official conversion. And the board passed a motion at the last meeting that there was a desire to have a small, what I call it what you will, a handover of the key ceremony related to the conversion process to be held on June 30th at the UBIT office, subject of course to COVID in-person gathering rules, which may be in effect. So I've just put this back on the agenda because I've given a heads up to the CBRD. They're prepared to help us out on this, work with us on this. And they have asked their, at our request, their communications people are going to do, prepare a short little article, nothing too extensive, perhaps with a quote from the chair and a quote from the Director Arbor, just about the conversion process, prepare an article for that, which can be used by the media. So what I'd really like, and the CBRD has asked me to sort of canvas the board just to pick their brains, get a few thoughts on what you'd like to see in terms of scope. Really, I guess what we're looking for is some suggested, you know, an agenda. What do you see as an agenda for this meeting? Or this session? And what would you see as potential invitees? Now, right now, I think under COVID, we're restricted to a maximum of 10 people, but if I recall correctly, by June 15th, we could be in stage two. And there could be as many as 50 people permitted to be congregating in person at any one time. But I'd appreciate a little bit of feedback from you on just some thoughts on what the agenda should look like and who possibly should be invited to attend, canvassed and invited to attend. And we can go from there. You know, you might want to just establish a very short, quick little select committee of two of you or whatever to to come up with an agenda and work with us on a, on an invite list or however you want to do. But, you know, time's pressing on, so we should give the CBRD a little bit of an indication and, and start the planning process, Mr. Chair.
Let's open this up for a little discussion here. Is this complex enough that we should take it off the agenda and have a little committee, or should we just deal with it now?
I think deal with, I, I am out of time and so deal with it now. What needs to be dealt with?
Yeah, I'm, Eve?
That's fine with me, yeah.
Yeah, to me, it's reasonably simple for us just to say, you know, what do we want to say, talk about? Who talks? Who's, who, who is there, you know, I guess, how do you manage a crowd if you have to? I don't know. So what are your thoughts on agenda?
Well, Ian, I'm going to leave it to you, for you to lead the way because it was your idea. I'm kind of tapped out of ideas.
Eve?
Well, I, to be honest with you, I don't even see myself attending this, this thing, so I, I don't really feel too good about the whole thing, so I'm not, I won't be attending. So I don't have a lot of thoughts on what it should be.
I'm surprised, given that you voted in favor of it.
Did I? Okay, yeah. No.
Well, an option is to just delegate it to the, to the chair, to, to myself and, and the chair to basically work through a few details and communicate with the CBRD. That's one of the options, sure, sir.
I mean, I certainly get that there needs to be some closure and you know, and, you know, doing that in, in, in a way that is acknowledges the 60 years seems reasonable, and that's what I voted for, so I trust Gary and Ian's judgment on how best to do that.
So you're proposing what Gary suggests? He and I will just take this on and no need to bring it back to the board?
Yeah, I think there's a way of doing a closing ceremony, you know, I don't know, you know, this is separate from the CBRD, what you had just brought forward, Gary. CBRD doing a, what was it, a summary? No.
No, yeah, this is really, this would be our event, certainly, you know, so a couple of key people from the CBRD would attend. To my way of thinking, I don't think we're looking at anything very extensive, just a little, little bit of a ceremony perhaps, or, or just a little photo op in front of the UBIT office. I don't think we're really, the CBRD was thinking at one point in time whether we would be interested in hosting tours of the water treatment plant and the fire hall. I think that that's going to be logistically too complicated and
Yeah.
time-consuming. I think we're just looking at probably a single little, maybe 20-minute event, nothing more than that, in front of the UBIT office, perhaps Director Arbor there, the CAO there from, from CBRD, few remarks from Director Arbor, the chair, maybe the C, CAO of the CBRD. And then maybe, you know, some, a couple of, some of the more longstanding UBIT staff, long-serving staff, and perhaps some long-serving trustees who you may wish to propose that we communicate this event to them and invite them to attend. It's really just a photo op and, and invite the media and nothing more than that. I, I see something very small scale, actually. But that's entirely up to, up to the board.
So it sounds like you have a plan already in just what you described, so I'm, I'm fine with letting you guys run with that.
Okay, done deal.
Okay. Fair enough. I don't think we need a motion with that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Second item is just, I just want to leave this with the, the trustees. As you know, the vast majority of the paper records, the, the UBIT corporate paper records have been transferred to the CBRD, have been sorted, they're in a secure facility, they're going to be digitized later on this summer. The electronic records have been, and any final electronic records will be transferred over to the CBRD on conversion. They just did raise with me the issue of trustee records, any corp, any UBIT corporate records that current trustees may be holding. Now, this, there's no obligation
For what would that be, Gary? Well, I don't even know what that would be.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to get into that right now. Basically, what we're talking about is corporate records in paper form and I've got the definition in my report here. Ideally, all corporate records should be transferred, and a corporate record is defined as any information created, received and maintained as evidence as an asset by a public body or its representative in pursuit of legal obligations or in the transaction of business. This could include emails, books, documents, maps, drawings, photographs, letters, vouchers, papers, and any other thing on which information is recorded or stored by any means, whether graphic, electronic, mechanical, or otherwise. But it does not include constituency records, okay? So there's no obligation to, to turn over. And the CBRD is not, would not be interested in receiving those, is not required. Constituency records are defined as records pertaining solely to the political activities and constituency business of an elected official, including election campaign matters, but does not, but does not include records pertaining to board business. So really, I'm just asking you because I'm going to have to go through the same exercise myself at, at conversion, to transfer to the CBRD any paper corporate records that I created, electronic records, I've already organized my system, so that will be transferred over at the end of the month. So I'm just putting the question to the trustees, if, if you happen to have any corporate records of the nature that I just described, not constituency stuff, you know, I, I would recommend that it be transferred over to the CBRD. They will basically, if they get an FOI request, for example, next year related to UBIT, they'll, they'll just go through the records that they've been provided. And, but, you know, I, I think that they would appreciate if there are board record, you know, board business records that are held in a, in a paper form primarily, I guess, or an electronic form. They'd be interested in perhaps obtaining those, so that they have a more complete documentation of the record system for UBIT. So it's not something that has to be dealt with right now. I'm just putting it out there for you to think about because I'm not aware of to what extent you may have records that fit that category other, you know, outside of the constituency records. So I'm just leaving that with you. I don't need a motion or anything.
So Gary, I'm sorry. I need a concrete example. You, you've read a legal definition to me. What, given the realm of stuff, paper that you've been involved with, with us in the last few months, would qualify for such a record that they don't already have?
Sure. So, you know, if you were on a select committee, for an example, if you were on a select committee, the fire apparatus, something like this. And you're part of that select committee and you had materials related to the specifications of the new apparatus. Or you were on a select committee dealing with the water treat, something related to the water treatment plant, and you had records related to that, business records. That would qualify as kind of a corporate record. Or if you were, if, if some matter that the board was dealing with was exclusively referred to a trustee, maybe a human resources matter or something. And the chair or, or a committee of trustees were dealing with it and not the staff. So you would have the corporate records. That, that would qualify as something that could be, that maybe, you know, arguably should potentially be turned over to the CBRD. Most of this stuff, in, in my local government environment, virtually all of this would be held in some way, shape, or form by the staff, right? You may have a copy of it if you sat on a select committee related to the fire apparatus, but so would the fire chief, so they probably have it. But if you think that there's anything unique that you were, you were delegated responsibility for, and you, you were working almost, almost in a quasi-staff capacity, and you had documents like that of a corporate nature, I would say that they would probably fit the, the criteria for consideration of, of transference over.
The most likely is that I have most of them because I've done most of that work with administrators, right? Where documents are being created and there's working papers and those sorts of things. You know, I typically have handled those files on behalf of the board, right? You know, the example I might come up with is if you have some, you know, extensive notes on anything we were dealing with, you know, handwritten notes or computer-written notes that might be germane to a record. You consider that. But, you know,
Okay.
packages, for example, like, they're just copies. If you've written all over them, like printed them out and written all of your thoughts and stuff on them, maybe they become relevant. If they're just the paper that you received, then they're not relevant.
Yeah, I would think, I, I'm supposing this, but I, I would think that you would have very few corporate records that would fit that criteria. You, you may in terms of past, past things that you were delegated authority to, to work on, but I, I think it would be very few in number. And again, the CBRD, there's no requirement that those things be transferred over to the CBRD. You know, it would just complete their picture. You know, if anything was, if there was an FOI request next year or something like that. So again, I'll, I'll just leave it with you. If you have any questions, by all means, just put me an email back and, and I may not know the answer, but I would say to this, ask the CBRD records people, okay, we've got this. Is it something that you think should be, should be handed over?
I do have one, Gary, that I, I'll ask you to record and we can ask it at the CBRD meeting, and that is former chairs of the board who use their personal email address solely, never using the Union Bay address. How do landowners or anybody access chair communications, which they have the right to do through a Freedom of Information request? And I'm thinking specifically of Ted Haraldson, who made a point of not signing on to the Union Bay email address, which I find very disturbing, and it is contrary to transparency and accountability.
I could certainly, yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm not an FOI expert, but I'll, I'll certainly pursue that with Andrea Sutherland at the CBRD. She's, she's their corporate officer who deals with records. You're talking about board communications on
Yeah, yeah, any, any, because that particular chair, all communication was through his personal email address, including board work, so that has certainly not been turned over to the CBRD. And it represents a very real, the biggest expenditure of the district, improvement district, the water treatment plant was done under that chairperson's watch. I know there's questions about how that went, so.
And did, when did Union Bay email addresses get implemented?
Well, before you came on, Ian.
Yes, so 2019 minimum.
Yeah. Earlier in the year.
In that year, is that when it happened?
Yes, earlier, to my, best of my recollection, or, or early, not, didn't happen right around when you were elected. It happened earlier in the year.
So Ted would have been chair for a very short period of time where there were Union Bay email addresses. In other words, every, every trustee before they'd use their personal email addresses, right?
Um. No, it may have been even earlier than that, actually. It may have been 2018. Because the original attempt was to silence me as a trustee. So it may have actually even been earlier, yeah, I think it was, 2018. And Ted even then refused to join, right up until he left, less, just a few weeks ago. That's not okay.
Well, as, as, we'll leave this to Gary. He'll ask the question.
Okay.
And, you know, the, the thing I note is that this is voluntary, so we just have to understand what the, what the FOI implications are for all of us, should we be asked to relinquish records?
Yeah, yeah, there's two points I'll, I'll seek clarification on. I honestly don't know the answers. One, you know, we're talking about a former trustee here, and the, the communications I've had is just related to the current trustees. That's issue number one. Issue number two is the, the personal email addresses. So I'll get some clarification on that and get back to you.
Yeah, I will have
Thanks.
I will have a list of things for you, Gary. In fact, I'll probably just create a little thumb drive and give it to you, or give it to Janice or whoever at CBRD needs it.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair, and that's, that's it for the portion of my report related to the conversion items. The second, the second part of my report really is just quick status updates on three of the strategic priority special work items. And really, nothing much to report other than the water treatment plant washroom issue. I'll deal with B parcels and the subdivision bylaw, the MMCD standards discussion. Really, if you read my report, well, the board passed motions, very detailed motions, at the last board meeting on both of these items. And those motions are in the report. They have been communicated to the CBRD. And I have asked the CBRD to please respond formally to each of these motions. So that ideally, I can, you know, at our last board meeting on June 17th, I can say, okay, so here's the response on the B parcels issue, and I can assure you that there was quite a bit of discussion, Janice tells me, at the last technical finance meeting she had with them. That they've got all the information, they've got the legal opinion, they're trying to figure out, okay, how they're going to take this file from here and essentially move it forward. So that I've asked for them to please get back to me with a formal response. It's with James now. And on the issue of the MMCD standards, similar, I communicated the motion. And they are also going to get back to me on what their position is in regards to amending their bylaws to include MMCD standards. Now, I did though, and CBRD was involved in that call, after that motion was passed at the last board meeting on the issue of the MMCD standards. The ministry was on the call, Catherine Lee, as well as somebody from the inspector's office, and they confirmed that any amendments to, to the UBIT bylaws regulating development, I'm talking about things like water distribution, the subdivision water regulation, street lighting, distribution of water, any, any UBIT bylaws regulating development would require the inspector approval. The B parcel bylaw, different category. Reserve fund appropriation bylaw, different category. But bylaws relating to development would require the inspector approval. And I quote the response from the ministry, "And it is highly unlikely that the inspector would consider registering such bylaws this close to conversion, even more so since the CBRD has indicated that it will work to address UBIT's concerns through bylaws of its own post-conversion." So I have asked Mr. Warren to please get back to us on the board's motion, ideally before the June 17th regular board meeting, but certainly before the next, the, the, the next conversion working committee meeting on the 22nd of June, when you're going to be in attendance, on what the CBRD position is on amending their bylaws. I think it's, I, you know, I, I, from what I understand, they're prepared to do that, they're prepared to do it as quickly as they can. But there's process and timing issues to do it before the conversion date. But we're, I'm awaiting their response. They have, they have the formal motions on UBIT letterhead, and they're going to communicate back. The final issue, just a, just an update. So the request for quotations on the water treatment plant office, change room, washroom, we sent it out to 12 vendors and we touched bases with them. We did get two responding, saying, look, we're just, we just got so much work on our plate right now. We're so backed up, we can't, we can't submit. We did not get any quotes. I have communicated that to the CBRD and said, okay, so we got to consider Plan B here. What, what's Plan B? And this is, it was just last Thursday that the, that the RFQ closed. So they're considering what to do next, and obviously, they'll be taking over the next step on this. But I can tell you that their current thinking, at least from engineering, is that they're, they're kind of reflecting on this and they're saying, okay, we're thinking, and I'm kind of quoting here, paraphrasing, communications at the staff level from CRD, we're thinking that all operators will likely be reporting daily to the new CBRD Water Operations Center and working as part of that team, not necessarily in Union Bay all the time. So that operators can eventually become familiar with all aspects of our systems and be effective while on call. If there won't be any operators based out of the treatment plant, you know, on kind of a full-time basis, the scale of support facility necessary could, could potentially be reduced. Possibly just a washroom and appropriately sized septic field. And no change, and no, with no change or lunchrooms. So they said they were going to reach out to Dan, Miguel, and Sonia, get their up, get their perspective on that, whether that would be workable or not. But that's kind of what they're, they're thinking now is, is one potential option to, to scale it right back to a washroom facility. The board's already approved proceeding with the septic field installation. That would, that's required in any event. And it's a, it's an appropriately sized septic field for just, you know, one kind of washroom. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't proceed with that. So again, by June 17th, I hope to have clearer direction or response from the CBR, CBRD on where we go from here. I guess the industry is just really totally backed up and, and, you know, they've got more work than they can shake a stick at. So that's the update, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't need motions on any of those items. I hope to be able to kind of close the loop on June 17th at the next board meeting on, on, and have responses from the CBRD and clarification on each of these items.
Susanna, I saw your hand. Suzanne, I saw your hand.
Oh, I just wanted to comment about construction. I have a small construction project going on. It's an absolute nightmare. The delays are just atrocious and the costs are through the roof. So, yeah. Uh, it's, that's disappointing, but thanks for all that, uh, summary, Gary, and information.
I'll keep you posted.
In the event that, um, a full facility is required, I guess we're still turning that over to CVRD. But I'm wondering about, prior to the formal process, we had some interested parties that had given us estimates.
Well, yes, uh, that, that, that was Janice and I, and my first thinking is that, okay, so we've done, we've gone through a transparent RFQ process, we've given a bunch of vendors the opportunity. Now let's go back and look at some sole sourcing opportunities, go back to the ones that did express an interest last fall, right? And say, okay, can you help us out? So, um, that is very much an option. But before we do that, again, we're now into the CVRD realm. We, we have to get there. Okay, what's, what's the scope of work here? That you, um, that, that, that you would like to see. But yes, that was the first thought of Janice and my, that, okay, let's go back to two or three that Dan communicated with directly, uh, at the time.
Okay. Thank you. So that is our agenda.
It is, Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Yes. So I guess we're at that point where we, um, if there's no further items that have arisen during the course of the meeting, that we have a motion to adjourn.
Can I just add one comment? Um, on the 17th, that is our last board meeting, you know, really the last functioning meeting of, of Union Bay. And, uh, uh, I feel like as a small local government, I would like to extend some recognition and condolences for the children, uh, buried in our fair province. I, I realize that's not a an agenda item, but it's a really significant event that everybody is really grappling with. Um, we have our own children buried on multiple locations on Vancouver Island that have yet to be found and brought home. And I think it, I, I just feel it needs to be stated somehow, some, some acknowledgement and um, support, solidarity for our First Nations.
I can record that in the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Suzanne, is that what you're after, or are you after something more formal at our board meeting where a motion is made and voted on?
I think something, I don't know, Eve, if you could weigh in here, I, I feel like it's just unspeakably sad. And we represent government, and it was government, it was government policy that, that led this. And I feel as an elected leader, a duty to convey my deepest, deepest sorrow.
You're doing a good job of that right now. You know, the, the, I, I stand with you, um, you know, sort of emotionally with this, right? Like personally. And what I wonder about is whether, you know, it, it is in the purview of us as an improvement district with waters, sewage, or sort of water, you know, fire and, and street lighting to do that. Um, but, you know, like, my heart says I want to do it. Just, and, and maybe that's all that we just each make our own statements and leave it at that, right? Um, or we do a motion, right? Like, if we do a motion, it's hard, it's a very hard motion to vote against, even though it's, it's not within our purview, right? So, um,
Yeah, it's more, it's more, it's more, sorry, more aspirational, uh, it's, it's a wish.
Yeah. I think maybe, you know, can I ask this of you? If, you know, as the one that brought this up, would you be interested in drafting a motion that could be proposed at our, our board meeting?
Sure.
Maybe send it out, send it out to Eve and I ahead of time so we can contribute.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do that.
Gary, what are your thoughts on that as an approach?
Nope, that's totally appropriate, and I always circulate the draft agenda the week before, so, um, that's totally appropriate. I'll make a note of it and bookmark something and, uh, yep, totally appropriate for the next board agenda.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we adjourn?
Not for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? I. All right, see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.